If you will please rise, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor Trader will lead us this evening.
I would like to pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Judy, would you call the speakers, please?
Counselors, Lorenz.
Here.
Schlebach.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Trader.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
We have a floor with everyone present. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, Senate.
Any further discussion? Judy?
Schlebach.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Trader.
Aye.
Lorenz.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to proclamations, communications, and appointments. We would like this evening to recognize Michael Martinez for his one year of service.
The mayor, I think they're running a little bit late.
Oh, okay. We'll skip him. So do we want to skip over to the next item as well?
Yeah, so along with awards.
Okay.
I think they're traveling.
Are they there? No, they're still not seen.
They're not here yet.
Okay, all right. So we will come back to proclamations, communications, and appointments. Citizens' comments and special presentations. We have Mr. Peter Nichols here this evening to discuss our proposed water augmentation plan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With me is Kate Ryan.
We've kind of changed our format a little bit since we now have a YouTube video channel, so if you'd just please step forward.
Stand there. Usually when I'm in court, they give you this little thing you can really hide behind, you know, but I'll do my best. Sorry to be a little inappropriately dressed. I still can't put my foot in any shoes after a climbing accident four months ago, but I'm getting there. So, anyway, we've been talking since 2007 to get prepared for the new groundwater rules that were adopted by or proposed by the state engineer about a year ago, like a year ago September, and they could go into effect as early as next January. They probably won't, but they could. And so one of the things we've been doing all along is try and prepare the city for those rules going forward. And what we wanted to do is be able to file a plan for augmentation to replace the city's out-of-priority well depletions, and the city relies pretty heavily on deep wells that go into the confined aquifer, the deeper aquifer, for its municipal uses and much of its irrigation in town as well. And we have acquired on the city's, with the city, some additional irrigation rights to supplement the irrigation rights that the city already had and pretty senior rights on the Rio Grande. The McDonald Ditch, the Anderson Ditch, the Rio Grande Lariat, and the Ben Ogilvy Ditch. And we also entered into a contract with the Rio Grande Irrigation District to store water in the Rio Grande Reservoir. And so this allows the city then to store water during times when the river is running high, for example, and then release it later in the year because your wells use water year-round. So we have drafted, Kate primarily has drafted, a plan for augmentation that we'd like to file by the end of the year. We have also filed a protest with the groundwater rules, with the state engineer, so that the city has a seat at the table in how that plays out. And what we are intending to do is work with the state and division engineers on the groundwater rules and on the augmentation plan simultaneously. What we want to do, the ultimate goal, is to enter into cross-stipulated settlements. You know, rather than wait until the rule's going to effect and then try and comply with them, we'd like to get the augmentation plan going and get the state and division engineers to interpret now how they're going to apply those to the city's wells, so that we know what the rules of the game are before the rules go in. They are rules, but, you know, then they're subject to interpretation, so we want to get something very clearly nailed down as much as we can for the city. So we want to change all of the irrigation rights to allow them to be used for municipal and other, any other purpose that we can think of that the city might need. We also need to change the irrigation rights from their place of use, with traditionally irrigated land along the Rio Grande, as you know, to be used within the city. And we may add alternate points of diversion as to where we can divert those water rights as well. In addition, we want to expand the flexibility of your well rights to make sure that they are all decreed for any use that might be helpful to you, particularly augmentation or replacement of well depletions, and make sure that they cover all potential places of use within the city's current or foreseeable service area, so that you can supply anybody who is within the city who might come along. In addition, we recommend that the city apply for appropriative rights of exchange. And exchanges are sort of trading water from one point to another point. And what we want to do is trade the city's irrigation water rights from where they are here near the city, those four ditches that I mentioned, up to your storage account in Rio Grande Reservoir. But also, the city will have quite a bit of wastewater discharges, which are primarily composed of that confined aquifer well water that comes from the deep wells, but then ends up in the Rio Grande. That's where your wastewater treatment plant discharges and then goes down the Rio Grande. And so we want to be able to exchange those water rights, as well as irrigation rights, up the Canaos into Platoro Reservoir, because the city will have small replacement obligations on the Canaos. The city will also have small replacement obligations on the Alamosa and Lower Harbor River. So those appropriative rights of exchange are new water rights rather than changes of water rights. So to file for those new water rights, we need the council's direction. We need you to basically adopt a motion authorizing us to do that, and that's become sort of the formal city's appropriation of that water right, to be able to use it, to be able to maximize the use of the water that you have available, not only for your uses, but to the extent that you may be able to exchange water or trade water with someone else to meet your obligations. Obviously, the city doesn't own any water rights on the Canaos. It's not going to be simple to put water on the Canaos, and Jason is probably dealing with this all the time in his engineering work for other entities. And so what we have been doing is talking to the Rio Grande Water Conservation District. We've been talking to some of the sub-districts. We've been talking to state and division engineers about arrangements that would allow the city to maybe trade some of its excess credits in the Rio Grande, which are year-round, with maybe some of the agricultural well-related sub-districts to replace the water that the models show that you owe on the Canaos and the Alamosa. Now, one of the things that we talked about years ago was, you know, why should the city file its own plan for augmentation rather than just simply join a sub-district? And a recommendation then was that you should pursue a plan for augmentation, and we began a number of years ago to assemble a water rights portfolio to do that. And the reason is really primarily one of your responsibility as elected council members of the city. You know, the sub-districts are created by and under the auspices of the Rio Grande Conservation District. Board members will be appointed, and they will be responsible to their members. Their members opt in. Their members are all taxpayers. The city obviously is not a taxpayer. The city cannot opt into a sub-district. A city could contract with a sub-district, but you can't opt into a sub-district. But your responsibility, their responsibility is the board of managers where the sub-districts will be to primarily the agricultural wells to make sure that they aren't shut off. You, in contrast, have a fiduciary responsibility, every citizen within the town, to make sure that they have water. And that's slightly different than trying to take care of the augmentation water. So that's why we think that you should prepare your own plan for augmentation. We think it may be advantageous to either trade or contract with the sub-districts for the small amounts of water in these distant locations and use part of the city's excess credits available on the Rio Grande from your confined wells that discharge into the Rio Grande through the wastewater treatment plant to make that work. So that's a notion. We'd like to file it by the end of this year, the reason being that the priority dates for water rights are determined by year, you know, and so a priority date of January 1st is a year later than a priority date of December 31st. So we would like to get that filed by the end of the year. We have a draft. We're working on it. We're cleaning it up with the engineers, with the help of Bicus Water Consultants out of Durango, who you've hired a couple, three years ago to help us on this. They've been very helpful, very good at unraveling the state's Rio Grande Decision Support System model, which is this $10 million, 15-year complicated model that they have the, I've seen the model run, and you have all of these computers stacked from here to the ceiling with a special cooling system to keep them from burning up, and it takes them two days to run the model once. So obviously, we're not going to fight what they think, but we're trying to make sure that the city is treated equitably, the same way as everybody else in the valley, and we're also trying to make sure that the city does not do anything that inadvertently damages the agricultural economy because, you know, this is an agricultural valley. It's critical, the health of the agricultural economy is critical to the health of the city and its long-term prospects as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Kate would be happy to answer any questions you might have as well.
So you need a motion tonight to move forward on?
We need a motion tonight. Councilman Lorenz to authorize us to appropriate, to file appropriations for those exchanges.
Do you have a motion?
I missed anything, Kate?
May I ask to clarify the motion, to authorize to file for appropriations, and what was the rest of that?
Appropriative rights of exchange.
Rights of exchange.
Appropriative rights of exchange, to fully utilize the town, the city's water rights.
Do we, just to be clear, do we need to file on our accretions, or are they ours simply because they come from the city?
We have spent the last two days talking to people about that, and we're making progress on a resolution of that. We are hoping to be able to get credit for all the city's accretions without having to file, without having to change those water rights to augmentation and replacement, but we have drafted the change application to include those uses. Our goal is basically to draft a change application that is as large as we can imagine of anything that might be helpful or useful to you, so that we don't have to amend it later, and we can pare it down as we work through the process. And that's really the critical issue that you raised, Councilman, is what happens to these accretions and how are they treated? And your client, Trincheria in Alamosa, have been in a conversation with the state. We've been involved with them. We talked to them again today, and we came up with an idea a few days ago that seems to be gaining traction to deal with that, so that the municipalities will get credit for those accretions, and those accretions can be used to offset other well depletions. But we're not there yet.
Keep us updated on that.
We are.
So the application will cover?
Everything.
Yeah, we're going to cover everything, worst-case scenario to best-case scenario. You know, so that, our goal is to ultimately give you the maximum flexibility with the water rights that the city owns, so that you all can make the decisions about how you want to use these. Do you want to use the wells? Do you want to try and use some of the irrigation rights to maybe irrigate some of the public open spaces in town, the golf courses, or something like that, rather than wells? But what we're going to do is give you the most flexibility so that you can make the decisions about how you want to use your water. Right now, you've got a lot of water, but it's constrained in how it can be used because of its original decrees, as irrigation water for irrigation ditches on the Rio Grande, how the wells were decreed, and then these new groundwater rules which are coming into effect.
Would you call the speakers, please?
Martinez.
Aye.
Trader.
Aye.
Lorenz.
Aye.
Schlebach.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We will, once we get it filed, we'll get a, file a copy back from the court, so when they get it filed, we will provide that to you for your records, so that you can ask any questions as we go along, but we'll keep you informed as things move forward. It's a little bit of a moving target, as I'm sure Councilman Lorenz understands, in terms of trying to resolve all this kind of stuff and this little bit of negotiation back and forth, but ultimately, all the decisions will be yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Larry Gardner, here this evening to request Chapman Park for the Steel Stampede Car Show.
Evening. I'm here again to ask if we can reserve Chapman Park with the pavilion and all the tables, chairs, have the power turned on like we have the last three years for the fourth annual Steel Stampede Car Show. And we would like to have the fees waived as all the money that we make through the car show and the subsequent other money-making ventures we do over there that day go to the Faith Hinckley Veterans Memorial Park.
And it's the Saturday of Stampede?
Yeah, it's Saturday, July 29th.
We should sit down and, to raise the case.
I make a motion that we waive the fees connected with the car show for that day.
Second.
Any other discussion? Judy?
Trader.
Aye.
Lorenz.
Aye.
Schlebach.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please let us know if you need help with anything.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Larry, one comment. Make sure you get the application filled out over to the city.
I filled it out all this way.
Citizens' comments. City Council welcomes any comments. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes, and of course, we cannot take any action this evening on a comment, so is there anyone this evening that would like to? Then we'll go back to our proclamations, communications, and appointments, and we'd like to recognize Officer Martinez for his one year of service. Would you like to come up here and report? Anthony, Judy, be so kind. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
I'll hold this.
And council will get in here with us.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Evan?
Yeah.
We'll just turn it over to you and let you do your presentation.
Okay.
We'll kind of stay here.
So some of our supervisors got together and wanted to recognize three officers for some lifesaving tactics they did over the year for 2016. Most of them were just medical center calls they went on to recognize that there is a problem, and through their training and observed observations, they were able to identify the problem and correct it. And a couple of the incidents that we had were, as you all know, we have an opia problem with heroin and pills in the valley, and through the groundwater Narcan that we had, every officer was able to carry a nasal spray of Narcan, which is like four to six times more of a dose than we would administer on an ambulance service, which is a pretty strong dose. And usually what that does, once you administer it, it takes some minutes for it to work, but it'll reverse the side effects of an opia overdose and bring out the overdose part of it. So we had two officers, I believe it was Officer Wise and Luke.
Martinez.
Martinez. They were on a couple of calls where they were able, they recognized that there was an overdose going on. They were both able to administer the Narcan, and within minutes, they had the person alert and ready to go again. So, and then we had Officer Martinez, Luke Martinez. He's no longer with us. He was able to go on a call of a female party, a teenage girl who was suicidal at the time, I believe, was the way the call came out. They were able to find her at the house. He located her in the house, recognized that she had something around her neck, and I mean, literally, she was within seconds of going unresponsive, and he was able to cut the piece of wire or string off her neck and get her some assistance. So we'd like to recognize these three officers.
Super.
I'll call up Officer Michael Martinez.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
Would you like to stay here, Michael? We'll get a picture of everybody.
If they get my pictures, they should be there. Now, the other one we got is Luke Martinez. We got Anthony, Anthony Wise. Luke, sorry.
Chief, would you stand with us? Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One year and already saved a night. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, appreciate it.
Yes, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to resolutions. We have a motion to approve Resolution 12-2016, a resolution to approve and amend the budget appropriations for funds for the calendar year 2016.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution number 12-2016, a resolution approving an amended budget and appropriation of funds for the calendar year 2016, to authorize expenditure and revenue for the General Fund, the Conservation Trust Fund, Kids Connection Fund, and the Capital Improvement Fund.
Second.
Any other discussion? Judy?
Schlebach.
Aye.
Trader.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Lorenz.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Motion carries and amends.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to staff proposals, reports, and actions. We will bypass our city manager's report this evening. If you're not aware, our city manager, Forrest Moberg, has taken ill and is actually been flown to Pueblo and is in ICU with pancreatitis, so please pray for him. So, Ms. Jean, city attorney's report.
There really hasn't been too much happening since our last meeting, so I'll comment on a few things that have been pending. We haven't received anything more from Charter Communications. Wendy Moser is awaiting the markup of our tender draft that we sent her, and it sounds like it was hung up in DC and there. DC can be very slow with many things, so at the same time, we're still awaiting the return of the survey that I composed, and Forrest sent that out a couple of weeks ago, so it's probably well that both of those things will probably be coming in about the same time, so that you can negotiate a franchise with the comments from the public and mine. Railroad property cleanup. Forrest and Justin, myself, met on November the 8th, and he was, Justin was going to go out and take photos of the property, the debris, the railcars, the engines, the trash, the weeds, and these would become court exhibits in a case filing against the railroad owner, which almost certainly resulted from all this. So I'm still waiting on receiving those particular exhibits. The home grow ordinance, which was sent to Councilor Schlebach on 10/17, just to make a couple of comments on that. It limits home grows to the six constitutional plants by Article 18 of the Constitution, and it has to be in the adults' primary residence, not observable from the outside. They can't be grown in common areas of planned community or multifamily developments. No smells, odors from marijuana cultivation are prohibited. Light pollution, glare is prohibited by that ordinance, and it's limited to 150 square feet in the residence, and there are quite a few other provisions, but that's sort of the highlights of that particular ordinance, which I have transferred to all of you, and so whatever action you determine you're going to make on that, that's still pending for your action. This would be an amendment to the Code, Section 8-10-20, offenses relating to marijuana, and it's designed to address the ambiguity that presently exists in the caregiver portion of the Colorado statutes. The sign code, a couple of months ago, I sent you a detailed memo regarding the impact of the Reed versus Gilbert case as it relates to content-based signs, and some tweaking may be necessary to our code for political signs, signs that are, that create differences of what is allowed in non-commercial signage. So you may want to take a look at that particular memo. I have mentioned over the past several years about charter changes. Our charter dates to 1922. It's one of the oldest in the state, and it does need revision. The charter is the city's constitution. We have some ambiguous, outmoded provisions. The council manager form of government, it's not clear what that your action. This would be an amendment to the Code, Section 8-10-20, offenses relating to marijuana, and it's designed to address the ambiguity that presently exists in the caregiver portion of the Colorado statutes. The sign code, a couple of months ago, I sent you a detailed memo regarding the impact of the Reed versus Gilbert case as it relates to content-based signs, and some tweaking may be necessary to our code for political signs, signs that are, that create differences of what is allowed in non-commercial signage. So you may want to take a look at that particular memo. I have mentioned over the past several years about charter changes. Our charter dates to 1922. It's one of the oldest in the state, and it does need revision. The charter is the city's constitution. We have some ambiguous, outmoded provisions. The council manager form of government, it's not clear what that really means. Article 3, on recall, it indicates that any appointed officer of the city could be subject to recall. Article 5, the city clerk, the city appoints the clerk, but who terminates the clerk? Is there a reason for signaling out the city clerk over the police chief or public works director, anybody else? So publication, you've got a requirement for two times in there? Is that really necessary? The annual appropriation ordinance before the 1st of November, which creates a constriction on your times to deal with your appropriations. The assignment of a franchise by election. These are all things that I have recommended to you that you really should take a look at over the last two or three years. In regard to the court cases, there are some pending cases. I spent a couple of hours with the interim city clerk today going over those, and I have placed substitutions of counsel in each one of those files. All you will need to do is have your next city attorney sign off on those. I have signed those. That will be sufficient for the municipal court, and I have talked to Judge Powell, and he will substitute your next counsel. Provision of discovery in court cases still remains to be an issue that you need to get ironed out. I've emphasized this, we've talked about this before, because we still have defense counsel coming in saying they do not have discovery, and that creates problems in properly processing your cases through the municipal court and provisioned by the municipal court clerk. You have any questions on any of those matters? Okay. If not, I would just like to say that I've enjoyed working with the police department, the city prosecutor, the public works director, the interim city clerk, Judge Powell, and the previous city councils over the last 40 years. Good luck.
For you, we would like to award you a plaque for your years of service and offer you some things.
Mayor, I appreciate the thought, I appreciate the gesture, but I think under the circumstances, this would be a little bit of a facade, I think, anyway.
Judy, is there anything you would like to add to your city clerk's report?
You have a written report from me, and available for questions if you have any.
Any questions for you? Okay. Jim with IT.
Madam Mayor, Counselor. So, as you can see by our report, we've pretty much stabilized the network here in City Hall, and we're starting to venture out to other locations within the city, being the fiber located to the fleet maintenance facility, and the sewer plant's now complete, so they are now part of this network, and for the first time ever, they can enjoy the benefits of that. Shared programs, email access, those type of things are now all part of what we're doing. We tried to put fiber into the Kids Connection building, however, SLV REC is not in that portion of town yet. We have managed to get them up with a DSL circuit and tunnel that back into this network so that they also have access, be it not as fast, but they have access back to the city's network here. One of the big things for us last month was we identified funds that were seizure funds that weren't, that were restricted in the way they could be used, and with the city manager and the finance director, we were able to release those funds and buy some hardware that was needed to categorize and store your police body cam video. It's going to make it much more effective in any court case you may have into the future. We went over to the Kids Connection building on the day they were opening and found, I think Forrest tended to this at the last meeting, that there were some problems that we found over there. There was no wiring in the walls for their networks, their phone lines, their fire alarm, all of that had not been placed in there yet or due consideration given to those needs. We were able to utilize a local company and get that up in time for the opening. And we just finished up the firewall work so that they're now part of your network. We have also been working with E-Force and Casell so that the RMS records can be direct, the citations could be directly imported into the court records, saving that human error and that problem of converting those tickets into the other software. That is going well. It's not completed yet, but we're well on our way to making that happen. We worked with the DA's office and Xerox to establish the e-discovery system for the City of Manavista, for the DA's office. That seems to be working well. There are still some growth problems there, but they're at least able to now upload all their evidence to the DA's office, and that was mandated by the DA's office that everyone do it. And the only two entities that I know that has made the deadline is the City of Alamosa and the City of Manavista. So you're getting ahead of the curve in technology, slowly but surely. We worked with the police department at the old police station to reprogram the locks that open and close their garage doors over there. Apparently, they had not had those kids changed in quite a while, and they're completely secure now. And then we went on to our normal recordings and postings for YouTube for you and phishing reports. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just updates here first on the water leak that we had today. The water has been restored and it's back on. They're currently backfilling right now, so we'll have that. What it was, it wasn't a main, thankfully, but it was the service line that goes to our park, so it was a two-inch main line that runs across there. The way they did that back in the day, when they installed that line, they did what we call a Christmas tree. There were four one-inch lines that then connected through lead to the two-inch line that actually serves that park. So we're going to have to go back in the spring and replace that and get rid of that lead pigtail and put an actual tee and two-inch pipe all the way through. So we'll be digging again this spring, but the water's fixed, back on. Thank you for the 911 thing. That actually turned out a lot easier than I thought it was, so I'll make sure I incorporate that from now on on any leaks. I thought it was a much deeper process, and it literally was a two-minute phone call. So it was really good. So, other than that, you have my report. I can answer any questions that you might have. I do would like to thank Jim and his crews and his staff for going out, they've been out at the wastewater plant, the public works department, trying to get us up into this century, so I really do appreciate that. Thanks for dealing with all the dust at the shop and trying. So we still, and that's one of the things in my report, is we're going through our shop and completing, just a thorough cleaning, a complete reorganization of the shop, and as we continue with the weather like we've been having, we're going to continue to do that and get all the offices and really go through that shop and make sure that it's up to where we need it to be. So, other than that, any questions that you might have? I hope everybody did notice that we did finally get the restroom installed over at the memorial park, so still have quite a little bit more work to do, but the bathroom's delivered. All the utilities are at least ran to the building. I'm not going to hook them up this winter. We'll hook those up this spring. But all the, everything's there except for the electricity, and as soon as we get the okay from Excel and they hook up our power so we can run the rest of the lines, we'll have that hooked up and get those flagpoles with some lights for the nighttime. So, and that's about all I have. So, and of course, if you guys, well Forrest is ill and he's out, if you guys have anything, please don't hesitate to get ahold of me. We'll do our best to keep the thing running, so, okay? All right? Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, it's nice to see that he's got two arms.
I do have two arms.
Rob, do we have a replacement plan for like the flags over there? You don't have to even back up to the stand, that's fine.
Yes, we do. Okay. I actually keep the flags in my office, so as we do, we have, we usually keep two to three sets on hand at any given time, so...
Chief Lopez.
Good evening, again. This is a November report. We had five reported burglaries, 15 reported thefts, 124 reports for the month, and approximately 100 citations. We did participate in a DUI grant again for Thanksgiving. We had one DUI arrest out of the three or four days we worked. CSP reported that we had 1,230 calls for service. Some of you might have heard that we had a burglary slash robbery in the 300 block of Madison where one of our suspects from the theft had gone to an elderly male's residence, and while he was on the phone, he took his wallet, and the officers on scene investigated the case and were able to find the suspect a couple of days later, and he was charged with burglary and robbery and theft and crimes of, to an at-risk adult. This elderly male, he was kind of helpless, he was in a wheelchair. So they did really a good job in closing up that case. Kina and Lena and Kina and I, Sir Mike Martinez, just recently went to Austin, Texas, and they both got certified in the drug certification that she went through. She was up there for about a week, and every day I was in contact with Michael, and he said that she was doing really well and she's going to be really aggressive that, her trainer from the past, he was really, really proud of her and that she was doing really good. I know he called me a couple of times, goes, dude, she's going to be like really, really good, very high in like drug-soaked cotton balls on top of like campers and whatnot, and she was able to find it really quick, and then she had like a certain time to, he said she had a certain time to go find seven or eight different drugs in a warehouse, and they give her like so much time, like 15 minutes or so, and she got it like in five minutes. So she's, she's doing good. Officer Steven Pino and Officer Brian Royball, they're going to be coming off of FTO here pretty soon. I talked to Sergeant Rodriguez, he's anticipating probably by Christmas they'll be on their own, so that'll help us out quite a bit. We're going to be having some possible promotions coming up in January where some of the guys will test for corporal and sergeant, and that'll help us out quite a bit. And I just want to say thanks to Rob. I always forget, but thanks to your guys, I always give Rob a map, like this is our C dot permit for the parades, I want these intersections, they, before they drop off the cone, so we got to do just set them up and take them down, so. Thanks to your guys, and then thanks to Jim for all your help on the computer issues. Some of the guys can get their body cams to work and whatnot, so we're just like, hey, Jim, send one of the guys over, and they take care of it. This is like a last-minute idea, me and some of the guys had talked, mostly David, about shop with a cop kind of idea with, I don't know if you all heard about it, with, with kids that come up on, for Christmas, some of the kids don't get toys or they struggle or whatnot, so it was mostly within the PD where it was like a last-minute thing, there was no funding, we're like, so everybody just, you know, pitching whatever we can, we can go at the school or Kids Connection and pick a family or two and take them in shopping with us at Walmart, and I think Officer Pino already contacted Walmart and they're, they're going to work with us, and then it kind of just like, I think Crystal or somebody just kind of let the city know. So we've been getting quite a bit of just donations to put this little project together. We'll see how that goes, and then next time we make it go into something else. That's pretty much all I have. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, that's a great idea.
Yeah, it'll be fun.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Sorry. Jason, do you have anything to say?
I have a couple of things. I did attend the open house at the Kids Connection, the new facility, and it is gorgeous, though Anika and her staff and the kids probably think they're in hockey in some place. The rooms are big, the lighting is fantastic, it was just great to tour the new facility. So if you haven't been there, you have a chance, you should take a walk through. URA also met, unfortunately, we were not able to conduct any business because the state has still not released the grant funds that we had been awarded, so we're still in slow motion. But I attended Public Health last week, and the major conversation was land, amount of land you have to have in order to install a septic tank, and given the fact that we live in a rural area, the board felt that the state needed to look at those rules a little bit better because to require you to have a half an acre before you can have a septic tank seemed to be a bit controlling and a bit out of line because not everybody has. There's a case up in Alpine Village, the man owns three lots, but it doesn't come to a half an acre, and he needs a septic tank. So they have contacted the state, and the state's looking at revising some of the rules currently in place. This Saturday is an amazing event, I believe, wreaths across America out at the veterans' cemetery. Saturday morning, volunteers will place wreaths on all the graves out there, and it's too late to purchase now, but it is possible, for instance, next year, to purchase a wreath for $15 to be placed on a grave to help with the costs of this amazing event. We attended last year for the first time and totally impressed. Of course, there was snow on the ground, and the white snow, and the green, and the red ribbon, so it's just amazing. Saturday night, we had our Christmas party, and after the bill was paid to the restaurant, we have $2,200 left in our travel and conference fund, and I would like to make a motion that council donate $300 to Shop With Cop and $300 to Angel Among Us Toyota.
I second that motion.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Judy, would you call up first, please? Martinez.
Aye.
Lorenz.
Aye.
Schlewa.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I attended the holiday festival, and it was, it was a great turnout, and I'm really glad we got the flows that we had and the turnout that we had on Adam Street is just awesome. The fireworks display went off without a hitch, and we were on the roof there ready just in case, but we, I think it was good, and I think it's something that, just little by little, we keep growing, and I'm glad that more areas are continuing to grow. And I'm glad that more areas are continuing to grow with that and participate in that. I think that's really, really great.
The painted windows?
Yes.
Not to Mars? What an ingenious idea.
Oh yeah, it's really great. I'm glad everybody's kind of getting that spirit and participating. To echo Carol's on the wreaths for America, that's, it's just an awesome ceremony. And fortunately, last year, it's not the day of what happens on it. But it is really awesome event. If you guys do have the chance, it's at 10:00 AM on Saturday, to go down there and participate in that. It's really, really great there at Home Lake. We did the school board meeting that we have. And I think we, we've been working on developing kind of more partnerships that we have developing between the city and the school. And they've actually offered some ideas for us for next year's Holiday Festival that we're going to look into. But they're definitely great ideas, and I'm actually glad that they're participating in that information. You know, I think the more the merrier, and we'd be able to build that up. Oh, and the Kids Connection, definitely. The only thing that I think that, I mean, it is an absolutely beautiful building. I think you're absolutely right, probably the kids don't, one room there is about as big as what the Kids Connection was before, so I think it's, it's good to get them some elbow, elbow room. The only thing we'll have to look into is the noise dampening panels for the walls because it's just an unintended consequence that it does echo quite a bit in there. But I think we can look into that and figure that out. But I think it's going to be a great home for them. I think Anika and her crew have done amazing work. Bob and everybody that was a part of that project has done really great work, and I think it's going to show, so. That's all I got.
I just was at the Holiday Fest as well. I just wanted to give a shout out to the police department, the fire department, and public works for working together and making that a really great event. And it was definitely very, lots of beautiful floats. Fireworks was a lot of fun, and so I definitely appreciated that. Also, Upper Rio Grand Economic Development Coalition met last Tuesday. And we've got an economic summit coming up in January, January 13th. And Frank Ray is going to be coming back down from Castle Rock. He's the economic developer up there. And they've been working on this for quite some time. I know Matthew had a big hand in that. And the coalition has now kind of taken that over and has continued working to promote that. And if you really want to know what it is that the town, how the town operates, and what we're looking at, and what we're trying to do as far as bringing businesses into the community, helping the current businesses that are here, that's the, that's definitely the place to be. And I think I mentioned it, but it's January 13th. And we'll definitely, one of the better events that are going to be happening this year, or next year, I should say. That's all I got.
Thank you. I would also like to thank Rob and Chief Lopez and your officers and for all the hard work that you guys did, getting the fire pits out and wood, and helping us load fireworks and closing off streets. And it is really greatly appreciated, and it's nice to have people downtown and supporting that event, so, thank you. Thank you, Matt and Joe, for helping with fireworks. And I really appreciate that as much. I'd also like to thank Carol for organizing the Christmas party. That was wonderful, very nice, so. If there's nothing else, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
To go into executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024-F for personnel matters, specifically review of city clerk applicants in pursuit to CRS Section 24-6-4024-E. I determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators.
Second.
Any other discussion? Judy? Lorenz?
Aye.
Schleba?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carriers, you know, we'll take a short little recess while signing papers for any high school students that need their papers signed.